Alderman, we are live.
Come on, Rock.
Let's go Chairman.
Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Just get this thing over.
He's not here. No Joe. You can have Taylor in the box.
Having the appointed time of 5:30, I would like to call the March, the Tuesday, March 8, 2016 Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. Please stand and join me for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Thank you. Alderman Redpath, here. Alderman Sinore, here. Alderman Turner, here. Alderman Fergensy, here. Alderman Proctor, here. Alderman Jobe. Alderman McMinimo. Alderman Tylin, here. Alderman Donilon, here. Alderman Hanauer, here. Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
I would accept the motion for approval of the February 23, 2016 Committee, Meeting Minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
You're slow there, Alderman Redpath. Madam Treasurer, would you present a Treasurer's Report, please?
Thank you, Chair Hanauer. The Corporate Fund for the month of February had a beginning balance of $4,737,560. We took in total receipts of $6,76,430. We totaled disbursements in the month of February of $8,163,228, which left us with an ending balance in the Corporate Fund of $2,650,762. As far as an update on the debt for the city, we have an amazing paralegal over in City Legal who has entered in all of the debt that City Legal had into our ARIA system, which is the combined system we're all trying to use. She is now entering for CWLP, their risk management debt. City Water, Light &amp; Power handles their own debt for past due electric bills, but risk management would be if you maybe had a mishap with your vehicle and took out a utility pole or something. She handles, she's entering that debt now into the ARIA system for us. So eventually, all debt to the city other than utility bill will be in the ARIA system. ISD, our Information Systems Department, is working on getting my office into one system. When I took office, we had two systems in debt, and I want all of it into one system. So they're working on doing that for me, combining the two systems. And then at the same time, I've noticed since I have been in office that there isn't a way for us, when we collect the debt, for me to run a report and pull what is working for debt collection, whether it be suspensions, boots, iDrop, which is the Illinois Debt Recovery Program, or collections. So ISD is working on generating, in that same ARIA system, a receipting section of that for me, so that we can pull a report and see what's working best to get your money for you, for the taxpayers. So, because we can't, can't tell you right now what works and what doesn't. So we're working on that as well with ISD. And then my office is getting a lot of phone calls recently because the iDrop program, which is an intergovernmental agreement we have with the state to collect on debt, used to just only house traffic tickets, and we're putting in other debt now, all debt to the city. And we're getting a lot of phone calls because people are getting notices that they're not getting their tax returns because we're collecting it for debt, and it's good, so.
Madam Treasurer, I understand you had a pretty successful last month or so on collections. Can you tell us about that?
We got about six grand in in a week on collections. We've really ramped up the collection efforts in our office, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, please let everybody know that's been working on this. Great job so far, and I love hearing about the progress.
There's the paralegal in.
Yeah, there's a paralegal in City Legal who's really worked her tail off. She receives big athletes.
And I know the mayor's been pushing staff to, Mayor, I appreciate you getting after them. Are there any questions regarding the OBM contract report? None? Are there any presentations? Next, we have ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Mr. Clerk, could you please read those ordinances?
Will do. 2015-116, 2015-121, 2015-342, 2015-369, 2015-371 remain in committee.
Mr. Zirkel, are we getting closer on 342?
Yes, in fact, if you would like to, if you'd like to go ahead and pass that to the full council, I expect the signed document before Tuesday, I believe. The tax-related issues have been resolved.
I'd like to make a motion to move 342 into the agenda for today.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
So that's what we talked about this afternoon, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Could I ask Corporation Counsel a question? Is there a sunset clause on ordinances tabled or remaining in committee? Or is there indefinite?
No, I believe that the rule provides for, I believe it's 180 days. I'll check that, but I believe that if they remain, I'm sorry?
But if it's reaffirmed by the sponsor, it stays.
Okay, that's fine.
It takes affirmative action to retain it on the agenda.
Now for ordinances for committee consideration. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the ordinances for public safety?
Public Works, 2016-086, an ordinance authorizing a joint purchasing agreement with Motorola Solutions Incorporated to purchase radio hardware, software, and services used by multiple city departments under State of Illinois Master Contract Number CMW 361-8850 for an amount not to exceed $662,410.86.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Is this a GPS system? Can somebody explain this to him? Is this a GPS tracking system? Okay, go ahead.
This replaces the old radio system that Public Works, Fire Department, some city facilities, the library uses. It's actually the trunking radio system that you approved 20 years ago. Let's do it.
That's gotta be old. Wow. Absolutely.
So it happened in one meeting.
Do we have a GPS tracking system?
No. Public Works does, this is not Public Works, I mean, this is a radio system. Public Works does have GPS, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Eyes have it.
2016-087, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement with Jaron F. Michael and Sharon Lynn Michael for the property located at 3,004 South Alice Street.
Motion for debate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2016-088, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW 16-01-67 with Autobomb Company Incorporated for the 2017 Brick Street Maintenance Program in the amount not to exceed $2,018,844.64 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to tell Director Mahoney that this, getting the brick streets repaved the last couple of years has really been a good thing. The people that live in the area have been very pleased with the results, and it almost seems that the brick streets are getting paved, or the pace is faster almost than the overlays are going, so. Good job.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2016-089, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW 16-01-65 with Truman House Flat and Sons Incorporated to furnish construction on the 2017 Batuminus Overlay Program, Part A, in the amount not to exceed $8,829,187.23 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question of the Public Works Director. Mr. Mahoney? What's the expected life of a overlay?
They, we've typically said about 14 years. It depends on the road, if it's residential street, if it's a main street, the war on terror, so there's some variation, but we've used about 14 years.
Is the work that's done warranted at all? I mean, is it, like, in other words, if it goes bad six months later, a year later?
If it's contractor error, yes. I mean, that's why, we do have a project, basically our engineering technician on site, with a crew, so they're monitoring what's going on, they're making sure they're doing things what they're supposed to. If there is an issue with quality of work, we have them go back. It often happens where we'll have them go back, tear out something, put it back. Sometimes the falling gear, we've had some places where they had to go back. Though we do sometimes have failures where it's the base, it may be an issue where it wasn't known at the time, so that's not necessarily contractual, or contractor's error, it may just be a condition that was not, we were not aware of.
Okay, I have a couple areas I'll be talking to you about afterwards. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2016-090, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW 16-01-65 with PH Rotten and Son Incorporated to furnish construction on the 2017 Batuminus Overlay Program, Part B, in the amount not to exceed $8,518,526.2 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question? What's the difference between A and B? Sorry, Director.
There's no difference. We just logistically divided it out to split up the area throughout the city. So it's about the same amount, and we bid them out that way. It's better, easier to bid.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2016-091, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Springfield Park District for Archer Elevator Road land acquisition and the annual Batuminus Overlay Program for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Director Mahoney, is this regarding the roundabout?
It is. Actually, you'll be seeing two or three more ordinances coming, the next, count, be on first reading next week, that actually deal with some of the land acquisition issues we worked through, as you know, in that area. This has to do with roundabout as far as an agreement with Park District, there's some right-of-way we had to get along Rotary Park, that's part of that. There's a couple other issues, and then also, it's part of the agreement we do with them to include them in our overlay program, where they reimburse us, and we kind of, we let them go on our bid, so they get a better price.
Is there, what's the expected start time for that Archer and I?
Archer elevator should be on a June letting, so that's why you'll, the next council, first reading should approve it in a couple weeks, and then everything should be set to go.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2016-092, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the agreement with the State of Illinois through the Department of Transportation and Norfolk Southern Railroad Company for the transportation investment generating economic recovery Tiger Grant from the Federal Railroad Administration, FRA, for the Carpenter Street Underpass, MFT Section Number 13-0047500-BR for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Okay.
Noted. 2016-093, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that the motorfield tax funds in the amount of $359,317 may be used to pay Norfolk Southern Railway Company for an additional railway work for the Carpenter Street Underpass Project, MFT Section Number 13-00475-00-BR for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Noted. 2016-094, an ordinance authorizing a contract between the City of Springfield and Nesbit Enterprises LLC for the purchase and sale of real estate located at 1613 North 11th Street for an amount not to exceed $117,500, and for relocation expenses and closing costs not to exceed $70,188, for a total amount not to exceed $187,688.
Mr. Clerk, we've been asked to hold 094, 095, and 096. I apologize for not letting you know.
Noted. 2016-104, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with Herschel Woody Williams Medal of Honor Foundation for the establishment of the Gold Star Families Memorial Monuments at Oak Ridge Cemetery.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? I know we have some people from the Woody Williams Medal of Honor Foundation here.
We also have Director Lellis here from the cemetery. I'd like to hear some more about the project, please.
Please state your name and your address, please.
Michael Lellis, Oak Ridge Cemetery. That's not my address.
Dan Moore, 2724 Woodridge, Illinois.
It pleases me to introduce Mr. Moore on behalf of the Woody Williams Foundation. Did all of the Aldermen receive information I sent out to you Friday briefly explaining the project? I think we should be honored about the fact that Mr. Moore and folks from the foundation came to Springfield from Chicago to grace Oak Ridge Cemetery with what I think's going to be a super addition and a great addition to Oak Ridge Cemetery. It's not often that anything from Chicago comes to Springfield, so I think we ought to be blessed in that sense. I'll let Mr. Moore just very briefly explain the project to you, and allow him to answer any questions about that.
Herschel Woody Williams was a Iwo Jima veteran. He served there in the 3rd Marine Division, and received the Medal of Honor for taking out seven pillboxes with five flamethrowers and going back and forth through the enemy lines in machine gun fire about eight times. He had to take it out so that they could take the airfield at that time. He's the only living Medal of Honor recipient from '27 that were given the Medal of Honor at Iwo Jima, and he's 92 now, and he would like to see a Gold Star Family Memorial in every state. And what I'm trying to do as a board member is to be able to try to get national prominence for, for the monuments. A lot of times that we have nowadays, we don't put up monuments until, until the conflicts are done, and what we found is, on the war on terror, all the young men and women that are sacrificing their lives for the country don't have a place to mourn. So we're trying to, to put up the Gold Star Family Memorials to give a place for those families that are mourning, to be able to come and mourn those sons and daughters that have given their lives in the country. So with Oak Ridge Cemetery having the Tomb of Lincoln, we feel it's a national prominence, and we would, we would try to bring national prominence to the city of Springfield. Last August, the First Lady invited, staff invited us to the White House, and we made presentation, myself and some others, in the east wing of the White House. I've been in contact with, with them about the different things that we're doing here and trying to get this in Oak Ridge Cemetery, and we're working with them to try to give this a national prominence, to bring this to the foundation, so that we can get more of these in for Mr. Williams to see one of these in all 50 states before he passes. So I would appreciate it if, you know, Aldermen, older women would, would be able to pass this, and we could get one in Oak Ridge Cemetery. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. I do serve, I live in the suburbs of Chicago, but I do serve on the National Board. I'm a businessman, I own a few IT consulting companies up there, and I take my time to do this. I'll actually be going in the morning and doing the same thing at the War Memorial Grounds in Indianapolis, and making the same type of speech and the same type of presentation to them, so it's much appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Once it's, once it's passed, how long will it take for you to, to get it erected?
The granites, the size, have you guys seen the pictures? The granite's very large. Just the cost of the granite is $32,000, and it takes them usually six months to do. So, so for us to be able to, if we started from day one, where we had all the monies to be able to do that, it would be at least six months to be able to do that. What, what we're planning on is it probably would be in the 12 to 18 months timeframe, because we're working with, with Mike and the Oak Ridge Cemetery to be able to put some crematorium there with it. I think some of you have seen those, those types of things, and we need to raise additional monies to be able to do that, to help some financing for the cemetery.
How's this going to be funded, and is, what's Oak Ridge's part in, in the funding of this?
There is, there is no funding that you have to do, there's no money from the city. We will be fundraising the entirety for that. Mr. Williams does honorary and speaking fees, and the different things that we do. We've already started collecting money even with, without putting a place for people to donate, but there are many people that, you know, in my business contacts that I have, I don't think it's going to be an issue with, with raising the funds that are needed.
Well, as a veteran, I appreciate you picking Oak Ridge Cemetery to erect this monument.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mike, I got a question for you. There was some concern, I think, at the last meeting about something about the other, other monuments, and there had some issues. Can you explain that?
Very valid point. One of the gentlemen who represents and was instrumental in constructing the memorials is Mr. Jim Mathis. Jim, you can step up if you'd like. And Carl Greenwood, the Korean, and Carl stopped in, I spoke to him. We've not been able to make contact with the World War II folks, memorial folks, but I believe Mr. Mathis and both Carl Greenwood have been very supportive once we've explained to them. This is not a huge, massive memorial like, like the World War II. This is, the granite pieces are probably about as tall as a, as a human being, and they're about, what, four of them in a series? So we're just looking at a small area that's going to be contiguous to our, nowhere near, actually nowhere near the memorial, it's very far west of the Vietnam Memorial, and I'll let Jim, you know, weigh in here.
I know a little bit about controversy, we certainly had ours out there in the area, but I just talked to Dan yesterday, and I just looked over, over the material, and quite frankly, and I talked to Carl, Carl's a friend of mine, we generally agree on most things, we may come about it in a different fashion, but we generally agree on it. But basically, from what I've seen of the design, and what Dan tells me is, it's not going to be massive, and it's really up to the city and, and the Cemetery Commission because it's not on state property, okay? The problems we have is with future use of monuments on a state property. Filling in some of the green areas and stuff out there with other monuments. We're opposed to that because mostly artistic design, you've got what we think is a piece of art, is what we have out there, the three monuments we have out there, and if you owned a Picasso or something, you wouldn't let somebody come up and start drawing on it or anything to it. It wasn't designed that way. So Carl and I don't have a lot to say about this particular thing. My concern when I was talking to Dan is, you know, the money which you ask for, perpetual care, that's a big one. Now, that's up to you all to figure out if that's, that's going to be there, because everybody knows the state, the county, the state, Illinois is broke, and we're all feeling that, so you gotta be concerned about expenses down the road, so, I mean, that's the only concern I can see as a citizen of Springfield that you should be concerned with. I think he's done his homework, so as long as it's not ugly, massive, and detracts from the setting, Carl and I and our groups really don't have any problem with it, and I don't think the World War II guys do either. But you gotta be cautious, anytime you add anything out there, you want to maintain the respect and the honor of what we have out there. So it's really in all your hands, it's not in our hands. So as a citizen, if you make sure that the quality's there, the care is there, that's really all I can say about it. Any questions?
Mike, are you satisfied with, with the way it's going to be set up?
Sure, the, they'll be raising the funds, and within the parameters of raising the funds, the foundation has agreed to set aside 10% of the, of the construction costs into a special endowed care trust fund for future care of the memorials. We're not looking at lighting or gas, gas torches or anything. It's basically a structure, may have some ornamental shrubs or something around it. Trust me, I don't need any more maintenance issues out there, we have enough to handle, but they have agreed to deposit 10% for future, for future maintenance. Anything that particularly happens, it's not going to have to come out of the Cemetery General Fund.
Good. Alderman Tylin?
And Mike, you also have, basically, the design that's been turned in is what has to be built. Any changes to that design would have to come through your office before they could be made?
Correct. I think, Dan, you want to elaborate a little bit on that?
What we're trying to do is, we're trying to make, to make a design that's uniform when somebody goes from state to state or place to place, you know, they need to do mourning. So, so the design is a set design that we've had architects and, and designers put together, so it will be a set design. If anything that changes from that, Woody Williams himself usually has to, to okay that design, and usually, nobody has, has had that. We've also, just so you know, on the design, if you look at the, the black granite, we'll have different pictures, so every place can be unique to the state, and we've had Paul Turnball, who is a Heartland painter up in, in the Marengo, I believe, area, that's actually done some creative art that is unique to this, has Illinois and Abraham Lincoln's bus, and, and different corn, different things that represent, represent the state and Illinois and President Lincoln, of course, to, to be on the different ones of the granite.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Turner.
I'm, I'm excited about this project. I, I'm not concerned at all about the maintenance. I think that Director Lellis and his staff have done a wonderful job of actually building up Oak Ridge and bringing it into what I think is the significance that it is now, so I have no doubt that they will continue with that. I also think that this is a unique opportunity, because if you look at the monuments that are there, they are very specific to wars and/or conflicts. This is one that will transcend that and will actually speak to all of the individuals that have given their life in each and every one of those conflicts, so I think that it is a unique opportunity for the cemetery, it's a new, unique opportunity for Springfield, and a unique opportunity for us to actually commemorate those who have lost their life. And I, I speak to that with, with a lot of respect, because I had a nephew that was a, actually the last casualty of Desert Storm, so I'm very excited about bringing that to Springfield.
Thank you. Any other questions? There's a motion to send it to consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Finance, 2016-097, an ordinance amending ordinance 175-0, I'm sorry, 178-05-15 regarding signing of drawn checks on city funds.
Motion for consent.
Second.
What's this pertaining to?
Thank you.
Changes who can sign the check.
Corporation Counsel.
New Deputy Treasurer.
Mr. Zirkel, do you mind if I speak? It was my request. It's to get the new Deputy Treasurer, Tammy McCoy, on the signature ordinance so she can sign checks.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, Corporation Counsel.
Any further questions? It's just an amendment. They do because of the change. Any further questions?
Our question, shouldn't that be spelled out in the amendment instead of, I mean, so that we know, and then we would, shouldn't that be spelled out in the amendment, so that way we know, and we wouldn't have to ask that question? The purpose of it is to, so that someone, a specific person can sign the checks.
But it's the third word "as."
It's in your packet of information.
It's in the packet. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
General City Business, 2016-098, an ordinance amending Chapter 90, Sections 90.43 and 90.62 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining Class F and Class F1 licenses.
Move to consent. Second.
I have a question.
Discussion. Alderman Turner.
Is this, I'm sorry, I wasn't here last week, but is this to address the issue of the dance hall?
It came about as an offshoot of that. What happened was, when he was here, he said that he didn't even want people under, under the age of 21 in his establishment for the insurance reasons. So I believe, at the mayor's request, Todd Oliver pulled all of the F and F1 license holdees, and they are all in favor of this.
Okay. I just wanted to put it in the context of what we have been talking about.
Yeah, it came about from that discussion, but it's not necessarily because of that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Noted. 2016-099, an ordinance amending Chapter 39, Section 39.12B of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to defenses to code violations.
Mr. Chairman, make a press to hold this in committee.
Do I need a second for that?
No.
I'll need a second.
Just make no other motion, it stays.
2016-100, an ordinance amending the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by adding Section 98.07, chronic news's rental property to Chapter 98.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to also hold this in committee, however, there are a number of people that wish to address this ordinance, if you'll allow. It is a known issue that we do have a number of bad landlords in the city of Springfield, and we'd like to address that issue through ordinance. Icon, inner-city older neighborhoods, suggested ordinance language from the city of Peoria.
Icon, inner-city older neighborhoods, suggested ordinance language from the City of Peoria, and that's what we drafted, I think we tweaked it a little bit to add due process and a few other things, but out of a very productive meeting with the landlord association and the local Realtors group on Friday, I think it was, that we'd all worked together with Icon to address all concerns, so we have an agreed ordinance to address the common problems.
Motion for discussion?
Motion for discussion.
Second.
Do we need a vote on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, who, I guess we, who wants to speak about?
Michelle Higginbotham.
Good evening. Michelle Higginbotham, 1131 North Fifth Street. I had the opportunity to meet with Alderman Proctor last week. I'm the president of the Enos Park Neighborhood Improvement Association, also a landlord and Realtor myself, so I actually did share some concerns with him that I thought those two groups might have, and I know he's had conversations with both of the groups he mentioned. Overall, we definitely support the concept. You know, we want to make sure that a good landlord doesn't inadvertently get caught up in this because they happen to have a problematic tenant or an issue that they received a letter from the city and then took care of. We understand that happens, and it's almost the law of averages. The more properties you have, the more likely you are to occasionally have something slip through the cracks. But I don't know if the Aldermen receive a copy of the administrative court docket every week. I know I do, and I see the same names over and over and over again. And just like anything else, it's probably 10% of the people that are causing 90% of the problems, and that's really what this is intended to address, those chronic offenders that keep popping up over and over again, and they're consuming a disproportionate amount of resources from Public Works, from the Police Department, you know, from the City Treasurer's Office, trying to enforce these things. And Enos Park strongly supports any efforts to crack down on those chronic offenders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up to speak is Greg Zee.
Greg Zeston with the Springfield Area Landlord Association, address 1337 West Wabash. Good evening, members of City Council. Again, I'm the president of the Springfield Area Landlord Association. I would like to thank, begin by thanking Alderman John Fulgenzie, Herman Senor, and Joe McMenamin for taking time to speak with SALA representatives in regards to both ordinances 100 and 99. I'd furthermore like to thank Alderman Jim Donilon and Andrew Proctor for meeting with Joe Chetloff, who is SALA's vice president, and myself, to discuss these items. They are respectful and empathized with our concerns. Members of SALA understand the issues these ordinance are trying to address, and it is in SALA's interest to see these same issues resolved. It affects our property values, and it affects the tenant base which we can draw from. We applaud Andrew Proctor for reaching out to SALA, the other local organizations he's reached out to, and the community for input on these items. At this time, SALA requests that these ordinance do not move forward until we have more time to review these, review the ordinances, and then to be able to exchange ideas. We want to thank all the aldermen for you guys' time and your support and your services.
Thank you.
Next up to Stella Dean.
I'm not Stella. I'm Doug Rathbun, Stella Dean. We reside at 1801 North Eighth. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak to you. We are relatively new to the City of Springfield, but we have been very impressed with the city services, and we thank you for that. And the Police Department, Roads Department have been awesome. In the past year and a half, we took basically our life savings and bought our first piece of rental property. And through a year and a half of sweat on our brow and a lot of hard work, we took a drug house, which we know because the police told us that was a drug house, that had feces so thick in the house that it went through the carpet, through the padding, and into the subfloor. Well, I sanded it with a mask on until it is now a beautiful hardwood floor. So I would hope that the City Council doesn't forget the benefit that landlords bring to this city. And as I read through this, and I've read it in depth, there's a lot of issues that I'm having with the way this is written, to include the fact that a simple citation, three citations automatically makes you a nuisance landlord. As I was reading this, and we were working on our building, we had set trash out right next to our house in contractor bags, just happened to be the same day the parade was going by, and although it wasn't, in my opinion, a threat to human health and safety, we received our first citation. So obviously, we want to be good tenants, or, excuse me, good landlords, we wouldn't be here today. But to be working our tails off and get a violation when we had bags of trash neatly set by the building is problematic. And as I read, I saw any stump over a foot tall is another citation. Well, I broke two chainsaw blades trying to get the stump out of the backyard. So, you know, if an inspector wanted to write me up, there'd be citation number two. We'd be two-thirds of the way towards being a nuisance landlord. Now, to prepare for this meeting tonight, I called, or, excuse me, we requested a FOIA, a Freedom of Information Act request, and said, how many citations have there been in the past two years? I kind of wanted to look and see, okay, just how aggressive is the city? You know, what are the points we need to look for? Is it trash, or is it, hey, your overhang is getting ready to fall down and kill people? They told me, Mr. Rathbun, there are so many violations in this city, we can't honor your request. That scares me. Now, it's easy to say, Mr. Rathbun, you don't understand what they go through trying to compile all this data. Well, I'm the bureau chief for weights and measures. My inspectors do 131,000 inspections a year, and I can tell you the violations. I've been into over 300 hearings last year. So I've been on that side of the table, I'm there every day. And I think this ordinance is overreaching, and I would much rather see outreach by the city to the landlords. And I don't know if there have been, like I said, we're new at this. I know I bring service companies in, say, let's sit down and have coffee and donuts, and we'll help educate you on what we expect. You know, we want to be good landlords, we want to be good citizens of Springfield, and we want to be contributing members of this community, and we work very hard to do that. But a simple citation without due process, to me, that's extremely overreach. You know, if we have the opportunity to mitigate it, obviously, we're going to take the time to get that situation mitigated and get it remedied so it doesn't become a violation. But to list a citation as three citations and you're done, and then you jump through all these hoops, that's way overreach. And it does, in my opinion, lack due process, because when the Department of Building and Zoning determines, that doesn't even go to a hearing. What, you know, and when I take something to a hearing, I have an administrative law judge that sets the standard. It's not me in my office making that decision. In closing, I see we're about out of time. Thank you for listening. I would certainly like to be a bridge builder on this and make it so that it works for landlords as well as the city. Thank you.
Alderman Donilon.
Just a quick question of the sponsor. Andrew, Alderman, is it, your intent to, the trigger point, is it your intent to have it, I know what it says now, but is your trigger, is it citation or the violation?
I think, well, Mr. Zirkel might want to address that, but I think it's for citation. But we're going to address the trigger. The trigger needs change, and I agree. Stella and I have talked, and I agree that the language in the ordinance does need to be changed, because in my mind, you know, after talking with you, Stella, over the phone, in my mind, you're a good landlord. And so this is not meant, this is not meant to go after people like you.
We do try to be.
Yeah. This is not meant to go after people like you. So this is going to be addressed. And you are a member of the Springfield Landlord Association, correct?
Yes.
Now, would you share your concerns with Greg, and so that we can address those in an organized fashion, or you want to work outside of your association?
Oh, no, I'm with agreement with the association, that we want to express our own personal opinion and also...
Okay, sure, I get it. But we are going to work on it.
Okay.
And to address Alderman Donilon's question, Mr. Zirkel, citations and violations?
Citation. Citation.
As a follow-up, I don't know how your computer system works, but I think it's, I'm trying to choose my words carefully, I would like to see it where a citizen such as myself could find out what the violations have been throughout the city without it being considered overly burdensome. I mean, we have electronic spreadsheets in this day and age, and like I said, we do 130,000 inspections a year, and I can go back and tell you the exact violations for the past 10 years, and it just surprises me the city can't.
I'm not sure who you talked to with the city, but Mr. Zirkel can address that too, but...
We sent a Freedom of Information Act request in. It was returned that it was overly burdensome to send us a spreadsheet.
Alderman Tylon.
First, I'd like to address one thing that you kind of questioned during the process of your portion. A lot of the citations and things of that nature are complaint-driven. So what happens is, is all it takes is a neighbor, someone driving by who sees something and calls it in. A lot, a majority of the citations are complaint-driven, or they're, we get called the city, we get called as Alderman, things of that nature. And hopefully, you'll be able to work within the system to take care of things that are a misunderstanding, or, like you said, you may be working in a room, and you're coming down and you're stacking the garbage bags neatly against the garage. You can't be in three places at once. The garbage will get moved, but you've got to get it out of the house first. So obviously, these things, you can have some timing issues, but I just wanted you to understand that a lot of these citations are complaint-driven.
May I respond to that, please?
Yes.
You make an excellent point. And whereas if I were a resident living in a dilapidated house, I probably wouldn't complain on myself. But if I'm a landlord, and I'm having to evict a tenant, even for lawful purposes, who's going to pick up the phone and call? They're going to complain as loud as they can about anything they can, which makes the landlords who pay taxes, who do this with our savings, a larger target. So that's why, you know, you're right. I was, I think, I've been around inspectors my whole life. I had 20 in Kentucky, I've inspected every kind of amusement ride, now, like I said, we do 130,000 a year. An inspector can find a problem if they want to. That's part of my concern. You know, it's like, and there are a lot of target-rich environments in this town. So I guess I would like to see a more balanced approach to proactive and reactive. Your approach is reactive, whereas the building right next to ours is the Ponix Place, I'm sure you all know it.
Andrew's dish.
It's a nightmare. But I get a violation for trash. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
You've got a question?
I'm not, I was waiting to be...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that in itself, to me, is concerning, that the city is reactive instead of proactive.
Alderman, you got a follow-up?
My final follow-up is, if Mark could come up and explain the, I know that Matt McLaughlin's probably not here, but Mark, that puts you on the hot seat.
Yeah, I'm not aware what this ordinance does, but what we do is...
I'm more concerned about his FOIA request.
Yeah, we can get that information. I haven't seen anything. Okay, so the FOIA did not go to public... Well, it generally starts, I think, in the clerk's office and goes to the process. I'm not sure when they filed it.
We sent it today.
Okay, oh, okay.
We asked, and we knew it was a time, they have five days, and they didn't respond, I can get that, but we said, you know, we realize it's a rush, if it's on spreadsheet format, would you send it to us, a response to us? Didn't matter how many days we dazed them to respond, they were incapable of responding to that request.
Corporation counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, but for a FOIA request, if it's a special report that we typically don't generate, we would not, we can take that into consideration. With regards to what the treasurer reported earlier with the REA system, that's something that they're working on with regards to that. Depends on the violations. Public Works has their own database, Corporation Counsel has their own, the Police Department has their own, so it just depends on the information. But we're not going to send out a spreadsheet where someone can move information around. It has to be a PDF file that cannot be changed. And so if it's something that we already do not have, then I'd leave it up to Corporation Counsel with regards to generating a specific report that's been requested.
And Mayor...
He can respond to that because...
Before he responds, I...
I don't think we have to generate a special report unless it's not very time-consuming.
I appreciate your comment about not using a document that's malleable, that when the city responds, it has to be something that is a locked document, like a PDF. Because, and it's nothing against you, sir...
No, I understand.
You understand from your point of view with weights and measures. You don't want somebody being able to manipulate a spreadsheet. It needs to be a locked PDF document when it comes out from the city.
Are you just asking for a citation? No, I guess my point was, are there really so many violations that we can do?
What I'm in favor of, if, I would save a lot of people a lot of time, what I'm in favor of is putting the violations on the city's website. I mean, we talked about that with regards to collections, and so that's a possibility. I mean, if, you know, that's something we'll take a look at, because that way, all you have to do is go to the website and search it based on individuals' names and addresses, and that would solve the issue. But I'm not sure with regards to confidentiality, if that, to ask Corporation Counsel if that's permissible, but that's something that we could do, and that put all this to rest.
What I would, my comment would be, since it was just filed today, maybe we can take a look at it, because I'm just not aware of it. There's a process that goes through every department, you know, an FOI request, but the mayor's point is correct. The FOI law does not require a government to create special reports. Otherwise, you'd be driven insane with people requesting this report and that report, and so on and so on. But there may be documents available, summaries, that might be responsive, but we would have to look exactly what you're requesting.
And I was simply trying to determine what level do the inspectors go to? Is it a piece of siding missing? Is a trash can falling over? Is a roof caving in?
Could you step up to the mic? Get a microphone. Step up to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize. No, I was just trying to determine what level of violations are written up. And the fact that it is reactive rather than proactive, I mean, there are a lot of violations.
You know, thinking outside the box, you could call Matt McLaughlin at the zoning department, 789-2171, and you could ask if maybe an inspector could come out and walk through your property with you.
Alderman Turner, do you...
I'm not afraid to do that.
Alderman Turner, did you have a question?
I did. This is an issue that is one that I'm very concerned about. As everyone knows, it was an issue that I talked about during my first election campaign, and one of the first ordinances that Alderman Job and I crafted was around the boarded-up buildings, boarded-up and abandoned buildings. So I'm very interested in this issue, and it is one that is extremely relevant, especially to the inner-city older neighborhoods. I understand the concerns that landlords have, and I do. I definitely appreciate that. And I understand your concern about this being a complaint-driven process. However, you do have to understand also that the city has a limited number of inspectors to concentrate on the entire city. So there's a reason why it's complaint-driven and not, you know, just go out every day and drive around and see what they can find. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is that I believe that landlords and tenants have a joint responsibility for the upkeep and maintenance of their properties. So I think that it's not one of those things where a landlord can, you know, put a tenant in a property and then, you know, just never go back to check and see what's going on with it, other than to collect the rent or when they get a citation. I think that a landlord has a responsibility to monitor that property, make sure that they have a good tenant in there, and those issues that do arise, to address them in a timely manner. So I think there's responsibility on both sides. I do think that, and I agree with Alderman Proctor, that there's some tweaking that needs to happen with this ordinance, but I don't think we should step away from the fact that we do need some changes in the code to address the issues that arise based on negligent landlords and those landlords that do not adequately take care of their property. And I'm not painting everyone with that brush, so don't everybody call me or email me or none of that. I'm just saying. And we all know that there are some properties that are extremely bad. And for those of, you know, for those of you that are landlords, I don't think that you would want... that you would want one of those properties to be plopped down next, next door to your house or in your block. So, everybody has, you know.
I, I understand. I guess, I guess I think you should know that on one side of our building.
Again, I wasn't speaking specifically, again, I was not speaking specifically about you and your specific situation. I'm speaking in generalities, because, you know, I get this all the time. And I actually live in, in an inner-city older neighborhood, and I do everything that I can to make sure that those properties that are rental properties in my neighborhood, that the landlord does what he or she is expected to do to make sure that those properties are, you know, are kept up. So, and, and, you know, for those properties that are around you that are problem properties, I think that that's what you should do. I think that you should file a complaint. You should call, you should call and file a complaint, just like I would do if I drove down the street in Ward III and saw a property that was being neglected. I would call and file a complaint. I think that you should call and file a complaint and initiate a complaint against that property and get it, you know, get it to a point where that landlord is being held responsible.
We'll be happy to do that, ma'am. Thank you all for your attention. I appreciate your time.
Alderman Fulginsy?
I was just going to say, he's very well aware of problem properties in the neighborhood because he, his property is next door to the Ponix project, which is probably the most dilapidated building in the city still standing. And I think that's something that ought to be noted.
I think that Alderman Proctor should work with zoning to get that taken care of.
All right.
Oh, well, Alderman Fulginsy, whatever word it says, that Alderman should address it.
Carol Niedler?
I'm Carol Niedler. I live at 2016 South Fourth Street. I'm the chair of Springfield Icon, Inner City Older Neighborhoods. We're a coalition of neighborhood leaders with a mission to improve the quality of life of residents in inner cities in Springfield. And, you know, I had a prepared speech, but based on what I've heard, I've kind of decided to, to go in a little bit different direction. I want to, to say a few things about the people who just spoke, and I appreciate their perspective. This is a proactive step toward addressing long-term problem property issues in Springfield. There are tens of thousands of citations every year in Springfield. It is a complaint-driven process, and our neighborhood leaders work diligently as volunteers to help keep their neighborhoods clean, to help keep their neighborhoods viable, to help preserve property values in their neighborhoods. We've heard repeatedly that resources are limited for addressing problem properties, and yet irresponsible landlords make intentional business decisions and allow their properties to violate city code. Those are business decisions. I'm a business owner. I make decisions about how to run my business every day. Nobody's forcing me to make those decisions, and nobody is forcing those landlords to make a decision to minimize their costs and maximize their profits at the expense, not only of the people who live in those neighborhoods, but to every citizen in Springfield who bear the cost of additional city resources to address these problem properties over decades. What is the cost to the city of these businesses who have made an intentional voluntary decision to have these business practices and to bring tenants into our neighborhoods who are problems? We certainly have good landlords in this city. We have a lot of good landlords in this city. I was fortunate to be able to rent from a good landlord this summer. Icon particularly favors these two ordinances, in part because they address problem landlords, but good landlords don't have to worry about it. If you're not in administrative court all the time, it doesn't affect you at all. If you only own one property, it doesn't affect you. It only affects people who own two or more properties. And so, we're not talking about registration. We're not talking about inspections unless you are one of these landlords who intentionally violates city code as a business decision. I am open, Icon is open, to changes in the trigger conditions for this ordinance. We are very willing to work with you, with the landlords. We've welcomed the landlords over the last year into our meetings as an opportunity to begin to address these longstanding issues with problem properties in our neighborhoods that affect our property values, they affect our net worth, our ability to sell our properties, and the viability of our neighborhoods over time. It affects the entire city, and it deserves a proactive solution now. We ask you to continue to refine these ordinances, to support them when they come up for consideration, and to pass them ultimately. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Tony Leone?
I'm Tony Leone, and I have a couple of landmark properties in the city of Springfield that I'm very, very proud of. I'm here tonight not to take anybody's side. I'm in favor of the original ordinance for abandoned properties, but as probably everybody in this room knows, I feel I have had a lot of abuses from building and zoning. But let me first say that I want to thank Mayor Langfelter and Mark Mahoney for being supportive and my own alderman on this issue. I passed out a flyer that I did, oh, a year or so ago, to kind of lay out the arguments and a picture, but I'm not going to talk about that, and I'm not going to complain about what has occurred to me. But I do believe you need some type of citizens' review board, somebody that is not inside building and zoning, and someone other than the owner of the property and subject to try to mediate what could be a very difficult situation. I happen to be on the Sangamon County Board of Review and the State Property Tax Appeal Board. When you had a legitimate argument between assessor and a taxpayer, you at least had another forum to go to, and the forum wasn't in the pocket of anybody. And hopefully, things were resolved. I remember as chairman, I served as chairman of the local board of review for 10 years and chairman of the state property tax appeal board for a number of years, and my favorite saying is, well, we're kind of going the right way. Usually, people that made a complaint had a legitimate argument, and that some kind of compromise between the assessor and the taxpayer was appropriate. That's not exactly what we're talking about here, but we are talking about removing it from those people. I, I have been called before the administrative court so many times, I can't even count them. I have had to spend tons of money to try to save my ancestral home that basically sits in the middle of a bunch of parking lots. There's only one or two structures between Amos and 11th Street that's in the first block of Madison. It's designated as the medical district, and it's not only designated as the medical district, it's dedicated as the commercial, future commercial area of the medical district. They started along Carpenter. You've seen what's happened there. There's no, no more homes standing along Carpenter, and they're going to move north to Madison. My home is, is one house in, in from Madison. Now, we're going to make it into a coffee shop. I thought it was still a residence, but the building and zoning told me, no, it's not. You can't put anybody in there. So, I went ahead, and we gutted it, and we took out all the electricity, all the plumbing, everything, and guess what? I tricked myself, tricked myself. Now, it was uninhabitable. It was inhabitable when I first had the filing, just because it was abandoned. So, there's a lot of complicated issues. I think some type of citizens' board might be an answer that doesn't address specifically a violation, though I certainly think something needs to be done. And again, I do appreciate and want to thank the mayor and Director Mahoney and my alderman for at least listening to my constant complaints on how I've been treated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Clerk Glasgow, does that conclude?
That's it, unless there are anybody from the audience.
Is there any, anyone else that wishes to speak on this? Yes, sir. Come up.
Please state your name and address, please. My name's Anthony Nudo. I live on South 11th in Ward II. I'm a 33-year veteran rental property owner, and I have received notices of ordinance violations. During my whole career, I've been advised by the officials at building and zoning that the city just wanted to work with folks to have violations taken care of in a timely manner, and that the folks that did so would not be fined. Amendment 201699 changes this so that all property owners would be fined even after, even after remedying any violations charged against them, all without any adjudication of guilt by court of law. I also find the same problem with 2016100, along with the fact that this proposed amendment is very discriminatory against professional housing facilitators, unintentional landlords, and the tenants that live in rental properties themselves. It seems to be designed to criminalize all multiple, multiple property owners in the city. It holds a percentage of property owners to a higher standard than of all owners of real estate. It penalizes all the properties a person may own, even though only one may have been accused of violations. It violates warrantless entry to a person's home by mandating inspections on unaffected properties. It is ripe for abuse by people that may not like rental, rental properties in their neighborhoods, may not like people that own investment property, and were folks that rent their homes. We have plenty of ordinances that are already in place that address code violations and don't violate a person's quiet enjoyment of their property. Additional laws are not needed. Let us use the ones that we have on the books already. I am asking that this body votes to table both of these proposed amendments. We did a great job with the laws we have in MacArthur Park and the Bel Air. Let's continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, moving on.
CWLP, 2016-101, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 16-01-64, substation department packet truck with Landmark Ford Incorporated, in the amount not to exceed $91,564 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Ayes have it.
2016-102, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of flight bars for Unit 4 submerged chain conveyor from Hecco Kitten GMBH in the amount not to exceed $52,580 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, posed? Ayes have it.
2016-103, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a lease agreement for 4121 Greenberry Road, Site 95, for the city of Springfield, Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any unfinished business?
We still have 2015-342.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Clerk, could you read 2015-342, please?
Yes. 2015-342, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended lease agreement with Pinnacle LTD partnership for the property located at 700 East Adams Street, used for an municipal parking garage.
Motion for debate? Second.
Any discussion?
Corporation counsel, if you could let us know what's going on with this.
Well, this is, the issue is having to do with the renovation, if you recall, of the ramp. The construction aspect is done. There was originally a planned lease for the facility, and because of certain tax issues related to that, it'll end up being an extension of the operating, the current operating agreement. And that'll be, that will be available. You may recall, Alderman McMinimum had actually asked for a copy of the revised document, so that'll be available before the meeting, in addition to what's already attached.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Ayes have it. Any unfinished business?
We have the upcoming parade. Mark, would you like to talk about the kids' area going to be there again?
Sure. The St. Patch Day Parade Committee, as aldermen know, a few years ago, started, actually a couple of years ago, a family area just to the, would be the south of the library, between 7th and 8th Street. This year, there's going to be, there's bouncy houses. Ivy is actually sponsoring it. There's going to be food there for purchase. There's, there's, San Andrew Society will be performing games on this, working with the park district at that lot, as well as there's going to be Irish music from 1 to 4 that will be going on, and some other activities. So, it's a good place to go. There's no alcohol in that area. It's a family area between 7th and 8th, south of the library, and also a puppet show and stuff inside the library as well.
Thank you.
That's everything I know.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business?
Yeah, we.
Alderman.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, we just had the opening of the African-American History Museum, which is located at 1440 Monument Avenue. The mayor attended, the governor attended, was quite an event, and I think everyone needs to go out there and at least go through it once. I think you'll be enriched historically from having experienced the walk-through of the place.
Thank you.
Alderman Donald?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I received a telephone call from a constituent of mine just before the meeting, and she was, she's a volunteer and does some work for some of the homeless in town, and she, after our conversation, I got a follow-up on some, something with Juan Hurtta of Community Relations. But she called me back and said there was a, there was a news story on TV today about the Salvation Army building, and, Mayor, I think she said that you were interviewed, and I just wondered what was going on. Thank you.
Recap the interview. I've been in office, I think, 10 months.
Not to spoil, not to spoil the.
That's right.
Sorry.
He's gone anyway.
So, when I came into office, I asked the Salvation Army if they, you know, had any concerns being that close to the tracks, because that's the rail corridor, the 10th Street corridor. And they said, no, they're okay with it. We'll fast-forward to about a month ago, Hanson Engineers, in a meeting, you know, talked about the closeness of the Salvation Army to the tracks. So, I again approached them with regards to, and I asked them if they would be open to moving if we came up with a proposal. In this case, we're looking for either, well, mainly a vacant block, so they could build a structure rather than having, trying to modify their needs to a current structure. It'd be better if they would, you know, be able to construct a structure that would fit their needs. And so, they said they'd be open to that discussion.
And so they said they'd be open to that discussion and so that's where we're at now. So the bottom line is, we're trying to work through a possible alternative site if it comes to fruition and it meets their requirements that they would do that's in their court. They would choose to move or if they don't like it, they would choose to stay put. But regardless, there's going to be an ordinance coming, it's going to be filed on Friday, that we had to amend the, or the other TIF, if you want to go over that, corporation counsel, with regards to the TIF, the requirement has expired, so we had to refile the ordinance because the timeline has expired. And that's been about, I think it was in October.
That is correct. The city has a development agreement with Salvation Army. It had been extended a couple of times up and through, I believe it is September 30th of 2015. And so the Economic Development Commission had considered it sometime after that point, I think October, November, and Director Davis could correct me, but there needs to be an amendment basically to extend the time of performance. And I believe that they'd request it, I think, up through October 30th, I think, but there'll be basically a technical amendment to extend the agreement. So that's what...
So that's going to come forward.
Correct.
Presented for first reading. It'll have the, if they want to stay where they're at, it would have that language in there, or if they decide to go to a new site, then that would have that language. So it'd come before the city council. But it's going to be up to the Salvation Army to decide if they want to stay put or if they would like the alternative side if we're able to put everything together. So they're not going to be displaced. If they want to stay there, they can, but in the long-term future, I always thought it'd be better to relocate and that's what they want to see is what their options are. But it would have to come before the city council, before any of that is finalized.
Do you have a place for them to relocate already?
We're looking at a couple of different sites.
Mayor, thank you for that update. Is, what is the TIF obligation and obviously in order to, if they did choose a different site, in order to utilize TIF funds, we'd have, they'd have to be in the TIF district. Is that correct?
Well, the, a couple of things. My memory is that the TIF commitment at this point, it was higher at one point, but now it's around, I believe, $1,070,000 is my memory, approximately that. And the options with the TIF, we have to comply with the requirements under the statute of reimbursable items. It may be possible to pay for relocation expenses if it is related to the other TIF activities going on since, including such things as the new bus or the hub area there that's being redone and so on in that whole area. So we're going to try to cover all contingencies, but we have to follow the statutory requirement. Thank you. And that will be set out in the ordinance. Primarily, it's just an extension so they can have time to complete either option.
Alderman Turner?
What amount of TIF funds have already been expended?
My understanding is around $70,000, I believe, or something in that nature.
We just received receipts, eligible receipts for about $71,000 for them. The total amount that's been set aside for them was $1,087, and they haven't spent down those dollars in the last four years.
Just the $71,000?
For the Salvation Army?
Yes. So, so would I be correct that all work in that building is seized right now until they make that decision? I guess I'm asking because, again, nobody emailed me. I support the Salvation Army.
We all do. Absolutely.
But I guess my concern is that this has seemed like it's dragged on forever. You know, it's like they were moving into the building, we did the TIF funds, then they decided they weren't. I mean, it's just been going on for a very long time, so...
I think they were trying to raise money with regards to that. And then the state, with the situation, I'm not sure if they received those funds.
Okay.
They were supposed to receive, I think, a million dollars from the state. So, you know, and then recently, that's on us as far as asking them to halt any progression of their construction.
Okay.
So is the intention is, if they move, that we're going to buy that property for the railroad stuff?
Well, that's what we're working towards. That acquisition of the property would take place. That way it'd afford the Salvation Army to move. And that's a part of it, because they did spend, I think, over $3 million on that particular parcel, so that's all figured into the equation. And that's what they have to gauge is Salvation Army, is whether it's in their best interest to move to a new location and they can build a facility that they would like, or they would just stay and modify what they currently have. But that is the, Intermodal Hub is supposed to go right to the south of there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, any other new business? Any citizens requesting to address the committee?
Yes, Roger Dennison.
Mr. Dennison, please come up and state your name and address. You brought a committee?
Roger Dennison, Forside Energy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just real quick, handing out just a few things. We're not going to go through them all, just kind of preparing for our March 22nd meeting and the items we're going to cover. But last week, we covered a lot of information and I don't want to be redundant, so first thing I want to say, I do truly appreciate the open and honest questions from the aldermen, you know, as everybody's trying to understand what's going on with this contract, so I truly appreciate it. The first thing you'll get, this one, take it home, look through it, again, it's preparing for the March 22nd. What I tried to do is summarize the questions and the concerns that I had with the RFP, so we can address that later. We won't go through it. And then real quick, I'll walk through the charts you have. Again, we can talk about them later, but just to understand, I tried to capture what folks I felt were talking about last week. So the very first page there, all I've done is shown, you know, here was our RFP price and if the Orange Viper mine had to match it, here's where those numbers came, or here's where their current number is, I'm sorry. This one says in January 2016, here was their price compared to our RFP. So you can look at the math and see, it's going to be $18, $19 million we were apart. The next page, I've heard $38 publicly that they've come down to, so the next page looks at, okay, if it's $38 compared to that RFP on 1.2 million tons or so a year, you're still looking $10, $11 million difference there. The next page is $36. I've heard rumor there's a $36 one out here. Same thing, you'll see ours is always the same at the top as far as the RFP match that I conveyed last week. You come down and look at that again, you're looking at over $8 million, $9 million for something like this. You will burn 3%, 4% less of our coal due to the heat, but I didn't take that into account here, so giving you relative number. And then the very last page, folks, we had spent a lot of time, okay, what's your year one price, two, three, four? So the very back page is probably the one we need to focus on so we don't have to go through that. What I did was took our RFP through 2020. So, you know, we told last week, we want to look at it through 2020, so you'll see our prices are laid out. I did it on a delivered basis here, so you could see our delivered price through 2020 and basically the average price delivered from us is $3401, which is $1.57, a million BTU delivered. So all I do is take that $1.57 backwards and say, we know the transportation at that mine, we know the heat value, and it says their price at the mine to match is $30.55. So if we're still talking $36 bucks, $38 bucks, whatever, to match our bid that we put in for five years, the average through 2020, that number is $30.55. So that's really the one I think we need to focus on and I'd be glad, you know, we come up later to, or, you know, later as we go through the process to discuss. Last meeting, Alderman Hanauer asked, you know, that the mines do a presentation. I welcome that. I did see after that in the paper that Mr. Brown's going to do a presentation March 22nd, which is fine too. What I would ask, if the mines aren't able to come and do their presentation, that the mines are at least able to ask questions of Mr. Brown as he's going to do this comparison of apples and apples. So I did apples and apples here, folks. I have requested from Mr. Brown, though, that he sends me the qualities that he's going to use of the competitor in the RFP. We provided all of our qualities, so I just want to be able to do apples and apples there. So that's all I really got this evening. The key point is any price over $30, $55, the ratepayers and the folks are overpaying. Any questions from anybody?
I'm not seeing where your coal ash is on here.
Coal ash is not part of the RFP as we talked last week. I was sent, I did, as I shared with Alderman Redpath when he asked, will price ash? I did get a communication yesterday from our folks down at Forside to get together some information on the ash bid.
Okay.
So we'll be working on that.
The other things, which I've done some calling around to people who formerly were CWLP to try to get some independent responses, and among the things that they told me, they said that even though your BTU per pound is higher, your SO2 content is higher and that may require some retrofitting on the current power plants?
That's not true, in my opinion, and we'll see what Mr. Brown has to say. First of all, you look at, we bid two bids, sir, the Hillsborough Mine and the McCupin Mine. McCupin qualities are actually a lot better than Hillsborough. We've all been openly talking. Hillsborough is not running now. We'll see what happens with Hillsborough, so we'll be shipping out of the McCupin Mine if it was to be something immediate for Hillsborough. I've done the math on those and I think rather than us getting into that tonight, we'll say that's not true, because it's actually just, we'll see what Mr. Brown has to say. It's limestone that you put into the unit. That's why you have a sulfur penalty inside the contract that addresses the cost of the additional limestone. Keep in mind, you're also burning 90, or 3% to 4% less of our coal than the other folks, so every ton's less. It's ash you don't have to handle, things like that, but that'll be a little more detailed discussion.
And then a couple of the other, and like I said, some of the people I spoke with were people who weren't even with the city when I got elected in 2007.
Yes.
They were already gone by then. And among the things that they brought up were that because of our contract, because of the way things are settled, anything in 2016, 2017, even going into early 2018, those are just numbers. They're not dollars, because there's nothing we can do about it because of the contract. And the things that you're proposing to us, we can't even look at anything that you're giving us until we're on year three, because we are bound legally by what we're already in.
Respectfully, sir, the RFP, though, does say, we bid it and the contract talks about matching and mainly when you're in arbitration, so you, your statement's correct as far as my end that I brought up last week. I won't do anything for two years anyway, because the coal mine will ship it. You folks, your responsibility, fiduciary responsibility, is to look at these numbers and get the best price you can based on my bid, or why did we reopen and why did folks ask me for bids, sir? But I get it, what you're saying.
Right. And I guess my last piece that came from a person who I highly respect was that, they said, in general with the coal industry, that it's a difference between a short-term view and a long-term view, that you can have a short-term savings that is going to set you up for a long-term fall. And I guess one of the things that I'm, they were trying to explain to me and I never did quite understand is your relationship with Murray Coal.
Yes, sir.
Is it a 49% partnership or a 50%?
I'm not going to get into discussing that. I can get that for you. Somebody up the food chain needs to explain.
And see, that's where I was, I was confused as well as to what exactly, because I've been researching Forside and now if you have a partnership with another company, I'm going to need to look into them as well.
We've got that. Rob Moore is actually the CEO that responds to the RFP. We have sent some information back. I personally am a Forside employee.
Correct.
So we can go beyond that and I'll get that for you and it's not the guy to answer that right tonight.
But it would be, from what you just said, it would be worth it for me to start doing some research on Murray Coal, because there is a partnership.
Yeah, Murray Coal, when you look at the whole, we're the largest underground coal mine company in the United States, so I'll have folks get that for us.
I'm very thorough about looking into things.
Appreciate that.
As you can tell by some of the questions.
Yes, sir. I would like to make one statement on your short-term look, and it's in the pack of the RFP. We bid through 2035.
Correct.
And if you'll look at these prices, unfortunately, coal prices are back below what they were in 2007. In 2007, your coal price was $31 at the mine. You skipped all the reopeners. Your coal price in January is $44.64. It went up 44% in that period. So if you look at, we bid according to market, sir, I mean, and we also are waiting to come in and talk about the best and final offer, so when folks are saying the short-term, I get. We bid through 2035 and you'll also see in this document, there's a letter we put, statement inside the RFP that said, any capital you need, anything you need for operating expenses, anything that this city requires to burn our coal through 2035, because the clean power plan's out here. At that time, the state SIP plan was going to look at that. We want to partner up and ensure that that coal can be burned and do everything we said, sir.
Okay. I guess my only other thing, which I haven't seen in any of this, is are there any other municipal power plants that you are currently providing to?
I'd have to check with my folks. I'm not the marketing guy.
I understand.
Yes, sir. But I'll get that information if folks wanted to be...
Because that was one of the things I wasn't able to find.
Because we're the largest producer in Illinois. We also export coal to 18 other states and, you know, so I can get it if you want to break.
I mean, obviously, I don't want to ask about your contracts. I'm just looking to see who you also serve.
Be more than glad to do that, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other citizens wish to address the council?
Got one from the back. You're not a citizen, you're press.
Actually, Mr. Rollaway, I am a citizen.
State your name and address.
Colby Huff, 408 North Laurel, South Jacksonville. Unprecedented for a member of the press to be approaching the podium, but I do come up as a citizen this evening of South Jacksonville. As I'm sure you're all aware, we lost a police officer in the line of duty on Friday night. He was responding to a medical emergency with an ambulance behind him. For whatever reason, he chose to make a U-turn and unfortunately turned right into the path of that accident. He was seriously injured on the scene and was later pronounced dead in Springfield at Memorial Medical Center. I wanted to come before the council tonight to recognize the Springfield Police Department and I believe in some of the videos that I watched, I also think I saw Springfield Fire represented in the procession that escorted Officer Fitzgerald home. South Jacksonville's a very small community. We're about 3,300 people. I have been very politically active in that community for the last year and change, as we've made some significant changes to our community and its makeup. So I've gotten to know the entire police force quite well, Officer Fitzgerald in particular. He and I, same age, at 32. We have a lot of other similarities. We both have two children. His youngest is just four months old. My youngest is 19 months old, so the last few days, talking about that story on the air has been extremely difficult for me and I just want to come before this council as a citizen of South Jacksonville, not as a member of the media, and express my thanks to the steps taken by the City of Springfield to, you know, recognize Officer Fitzgerald and to bring him home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business or any other citizens wish to address the council? All right.
Motion to adjourn?
All favor? Aye. Opposed? See what? Yeah, I'm getting old, you know? Since I got called old five times now.